What is it that you want from the city of Palmerston North? Creative City Conversations is a programme of city-making conversations that we bring to the citizens of Palmerston North.
My name is Rodney Toly. I've spent most of my life as an academic and a researcher with a focus on walkability in cities around the world. I hope people get from my visit some inspiration. Palmerston North can learn from other places and I'd like to think in the future other places will be able to learn from Palmerston North.
Tenakaoto Katoa, ke mihiki te hau kaanga kia rangata nei o mana atu. Ke mihiki na mate haere, haere, haere atura. Kia tatoa etone kia ora. Tenakaoto, tenakaoto, tenakaoto Katoa. Well, greetings to you all and welcome again to Creative City Conversations. My name's Dave Charnley, Senior Urban Designer here at Palmerston North City Council. We've had previous conversations around walkability, integrated transport planning, and tonight we just really want to extend on that through a new lens. Understanding how over a long time we've developed a need for speed and the unintended consequences it can have on our towns and cities, on our communities, on me and on you. With an adjustment of mindset, which initially on face value feels counterintuitive, there is a pathway forward to harnessing the true potential of our public spaces while tackling some of our bigger issues along the way such as climate change, cost of living, health and wellbeing. Okay, slow cities. I just want to share a story with you that I've been working on this plan. I call it the Palmerston North Traffic Circulation Plan, appropriately loved and known as the PNTCC. Its objective is to release the potential for city centre vibrancy, productivity and prosperity. Not for me, not likely for my children, possibly for my grandchildren, but definitely for my great-grandchildren. You're the first to hear about it and I'm about to share it with you. I'll try and keep it simple, so here we go. I propose to divide the city centre into four sections. Make it possible for motor vehicles to not go directly through but to go to one section to the other via the ring road. It will be inconvenient and it will be time-consuming. So the red is the traffic. The red coming into the yellow space is one-way streets to get you back onto the ring road. bikers could move freely on cycle paths constructed to accommodate them and move along, along with walkers in a quicker and a more convenient option for them, especially those who live around the inner suburbs of the city centre. I'm going to get myself into a tense situation with shop owners and business owners. The majority perhaps are convinced that most of their customers shop by car and of course a genuine concern that their livelihood depended upon that. Along the way, I may possibly receive some threats or death threats maybe. I'm going to implement over a single night changing signs, creating one-way streets. That next morning I'm going to have hostesses and hosts awaiting the cars who are coming in a little bit confused and I'm going to have them have flowers to give to the motorists to not only make their day better but also to explain wiff leaflets, the change that's occurred, so they're informed. At the same time, I'm going to scrap the brand-new city centre parking building that I've also been scheming up because I feel it's not going to be warranted. I'm then going to sit back and watch passenger numbers in the city centre rise by 12% on weekdays, 17% on weekends. I'm going to watch car use reduce by maybe around 47%. Visitor number increase by about 22%, including a small increase in those under 30. I'm going to then watch increased number of businesses, watch the number of vacancies decrease and also observe the shorter length of vacancies when they are up for tenancy. Does this sound like a good plan?
Well, it could at least have a bit of merit.
Well, the problem is, I'm sorry to say, folks, it's been done before and yes, including some of the death threats did actually happen. A Dutch visionary politician in Groningen by the name of Max van der Berg in 1977 introduced this plan, the Traffic Circulation Plan, or the VCP, in the flat, compacted city that at the time had a population of 170,000. And today, this bold decision made roughly 46 years ago is paying off hugely for the city centre and for the people, which I'm sure Max's grandchildren and possibly the grandchildren of the business owners are probably all thanking him for it. It's a plan that has created a template for many cities around the world to follow. I guess the point I'm trying to make here is that sometimes it takes bold, risky choices of a city that we must make for today, which can reap the most reward for the future. This leads me to welcome back our critical friend, Dr Rodney Toly, who was last here in Palmerston North in 2020, just as our borders in New Zealand were closing due to COVID-19. Rodney has been involved in the field of active sustainable transport for over 40 years. First as a university researcher and teacher and now as an experienced writer, international speaker and consultant, delivering numerous walkabouts and workshops, talks to communities across the world. He's the co-author of Slow Cities: Conquering Our Addiction for Health and Sustainability, a recommended read. Rodney was the founding member of Steering Group for Walk 21. He's chaired the International Conference on Walking in Liveable Cities for over 20 years and has been central to the development of the International Charter for Walking, which has been signed by over approximately 500 mayors to lead their communities towards better walkability. Please, Creative City Conversations audience, give a warm welcome to Dr Rodney Toly to present Fast Cities: The Elephant in the Green Transition Room.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Dave, for that. I'd just add a little bit to what he said about his mad plan for the middle of Palmerston North. It's not so mad. In 2007, Jeanette Sodik Khan, who was the Transport Commissioner for New York City, decided it was about time to do something about the disgrace that was Times Square, which was a traffic sewer and it wasn't one of the world's great squares even though it's in one of the world's great cities. And the way she did it was on a Saturday night, she brought along three trucks, one of which had temporary bollards and they put the bollards in the street and kept all the cars out. And the other two had 1,000 seats each on and the guys on the truck threw the seats out into the open space and as fast as they threw them off, somebody grabbed one and sat on it. And it's never gone back since. And anybody who went to Times Square before that time will remember what an appalling place it was and now it is one of the world's great city centre spaces. It can be done and it does, as Dave said, involve initiative and gumption to get on with it. So what I'm going to be talking about tonight is the elephant in the green transition room and the meaning behind that will become apparent as I go on. But before that, I just want to enlist your help because I'm on a journey and colleagues of mine are on that same journey, but we've been helped along by a number of people out there, fellow travellers if you like. And they include Douglas Adams, Lewis Carroll, The White Rabbit, Karl Honore, Margaret Atwood, Ivan Illich, a 1970s US driver, three random Dutch cyclists, an elephant, Billy, Mayor Lopez and finally Peattonito, the masked defender of pedestrian rights in the city of Mexico City. Now, they're the people who've helped me develop this story. So, and as they can't all be here, and we wouldn't want the 1970s American motorists to be here for sure, but as they can't all be here, I want you, when I mention them, to acknowledge them, please. Now, people who are walking don't normally make much noise but people who are cycling can go ding. So as everybody in the room is a walker but many of you are cyclists as well, each time I mention any of these people, I want you to go ding. So we're all aware of who's coming along on this journey, okay? You with me on that? All right, so these are my fellow travellers. And what they are helping us develop is the idea across the planet of slow cities. And this is the book that we published three years ago now, Conquering Our Speed Addiction for Health and Sustainability. And we are now following that with a slightly different version, a more focused version. This one was about the broad impacts on health, human health, environmental health and economic health. And now we're focusing specifically on the threat of the climate crisis. So this is about environmental health. So we are saying, okay, the book is going to be called Foot Off the Gas, a nice little pun, how big speed is accelerating the climate crisis and what we can do about it. Now, some of those elements like big speed and so on will become obvious as we go along. Okay, let's start by trying to put a definition out there, what we actually mean by the slow city. A couple of questions, not that you need to answer them now, but what do you think about when you think about how you need to behave in the city? If your sense is, your basic question about movement is how far can we go? The kind of city you're talking about is a city based on mobility. And if you have a city based on mobility, it is fundamentally going to develop this kind of landscape. This is a hyper-mobile landscape that we've become very used to, especially in North American cities but in many others as well, where you have extreme mobility for a small percentage of the population and a large percentage of the population completely excluded from this by not being able to pay the entry fee of owning a car or being driving licence holders or living in the right place and so on. So mobility provides that for you. It's a partial solution at best and it's a disastrous solution for many people in the city. Another question you might ask instead though might be, how much stuff can we get to? Is that the way I want my city to be? You know, how can I get to the butchers and the bakers and the dentists and the school and all of the other things that I want to access for a fulfilling life in the city? Now you're talking about accessibility rather than mobility. And if it's accessibility you're talking about, that's going to be the kind of landscape you are maybe not thinking about, but that's the kind of landscape that you will get, where things are close by and people are moving by slow means of transport in a relatively small area of the city rather than going long distances. So a very different thought process and a very, very different outcome. So what I'm concerned with is trying to see how we can get from these kinds of landscapes that we've developed around mobility to these kinds of landscapes which are about accessibility in the city. Oh, thank you. Good, we're on board. Douglas Adams, in his wonderful book, The Restaurant at the End of the Universe, lampooned this whole idea of the tyranny of speed when he said, "The trouble with most forms of transport is basically one of them not being worth all the bother." "On earth, when there had been an earth before it was demolished to make way for a new hyperspace bypass, the problem had been with cars. The disadvantages involved in pulling lots of black sticky stuff out of the ground, turning it into tar to cover the land with, smoke to fill the air with and pouring the rest into the sea all seem to outweigh the advantages of being able to get more quickly from one place to the other, particularly when the place you arrived at had probably become, as a result of this, very similar to the place you had just left, i.e. covered with tar, full of smoke and short of fish." A lovely way of lampooning what that kind of devotion to speed is likely to lead to in our urban areas. Not many dings here, I can hear a lot from the front here, I can't hear dings from the back up there. So here we've got Lewis Carroll. I'm listening, he's not on the screen, you have to listen as well. Lewis Carroll's White Rabbit from Alice in Wonderland, talking here about "the hurrier I go, the behinder I get", never actually in the book, but it's a very common quotation, it's a misquotation of what Lewis Carroll was arguing. And down in the bottom right, we've got Karl Honore, the author of Ding in Praise of Slow, where he talked about the virus of hurry infecting every corner of our culture and we're all desperate for a cure. Well, how did this virus of hurry get established in our cities? I feel guilty here because I ought to have added the name of Peter Norton to list of fellow travellers. Peter Norton wrote a wonderful book called Fighting Traffic, four or five years ago now, where he told the story of how American cities, which were mostly like the top image that you can see there, that actually is Broadway in New York in 1910. There's not a car in sight, there's mixed environment of people on foot, there were carriages, horses, streetcars, all other kinds of slow movement. And it's very normal for people to use the street in that way. And of course, off-Broadway, there would have been streets where kids were playing as well, people were meeting, there would be markets. The street, in other words, was part of your action space in the city, it wasn't just for travelling through. And as cars began to appear, the slaughter on the roads during the 1920s in the USA was astonishing. Fast vehicles mixed with mixed traffic on the streets with people on foot and bikes and kids playing and so on was a desperate combination. And the groups of people who wanted to push more motorisation said, "This is not going to work, you have to get off the streets." And people said, "No, these are our streets, they're necessary for our lives in the city. You have to either get your cars off the streets or slow them right down until you start to operate as we operate in the street." Well, because the idea of selling cars was about speed and power, then the group of industries that began to call themselves motordom objected to that. And they formed these very powerful alliances with politicians and lobby groups and others and with the oil industries and so on, all of them trying to persuade people to accept the idea of more speed on the streets in American cities. And speed was not at all what people wanted, but it was what in the end they were forced to accept by the superior power of motordom. And that, you know, was an organisation that brought us crosswalks. There were no crosswalks before, why would you have crosswalks when everybody can walk everywhere? Suddenly, motordom said, "Oh no, you can't do that. We will designate places where you can walk across the street. And if you don't walk across the street, we'll have a name for you, we'll call you J-walkers." And a J was a Texan bumpkin. In other words, somebody who didn't understand the city, somebody who was unsophisticated. So now you are being labelled as being dysfunctional somehow for doing what people in the city had always done and that is walk around and exchange and meet people and so forth. But motordom changed all of that. Now you were squashed up against the side of the buildings, the road was for travel, not for functioning people in the city. Well, the fundamental message was that speed is progress. And if you stand in its way, you're being backward, you are being a J-walker if you like. And you need to accept that higher speeds will save time for everybody, you'll all be better off. Higher speeds will boost economic growth and higher speeds mean that faster is always better. And that was the mantra that we were encouraged to accept year after year from the 1920s onwards. And we've lived with that now for a century. Well, Margaret Atwood had an interesting perspective on that. Are we dinging? I hope so. Walking was not fast enough, so we ran. Running was not fast enough, so we galloped. Galloping was not fast enough, so we sailed. Sailing was not fast enough, so we rolled burly along the long metal tracks. Long metal tracks were not fast enough, so we drove. Driving was not fast enough, so we flew. Flying isn't fast enough, not fast for us, we want to get there faster. Get where? Wherever we're not. But a human soul can only go as fast as a man can walk, they used to say. In that case, where are all the souls? Left behind. They wander here and there, slowly, dim lights flickering in the marshes at night looking for us. But they're not nearly fast enough, not for us, we're way ahead of them, they'll never catch up. That's why we can go so fast, our souls don't weigh us down. It's an interesting thought for you. Well, let's ask the fundamental question then, were they right? Was motordom right to say, "I know you don't like this, but if you accept it, speed will save you time and you'll all be better off"? Let's start to examine what actually has happened. We've got two clocks here. Look at the one on the left first of all, this is European cities and it says Western because it was formed at a time after the war fell down but when Eastern Europe still had a predominance of public transport rather than private. And the average speed in those Western European cities was about 22 kilometres an hour. And most people travelled for about 44 minutes per day. So 44 minutes travelling time was what most people's time budget was, travelling at a speed of 22. Well, in the US, where speeds were much higher because there was more space and roads were wider and more space was made for those higher speeds, the speed went up on average in those cities from 22 to 43. So now people are travelling twice as fast. So presumably, they will travel for only half the time. No, they actually travel for much longer. So increasing speed from 22 to 43, doubling the speed travelled in the city, resulted in people actually spending more time travelling than they were spending before. Who said that speed would save us time? And those relationships have been demonstrated time and time again. The faster we travel, the more distance we cover. And we all do that, you know that sort of feeling? Somebody says, "Okay, there's a fancy new car now, you can go twice as fast." Well, if you buy that fancy new car, do you go twice as fast? No, what you actually do, you think, "Actually, that suburban house, another 10K out, I can now get to that and drive back every day in the same time." So you suburbanise more, you sprawl more, you travel more. You consume the speed benefit by extending the time that you travel. So people spend more time on city travel in fast cities than in active travel cities. It's counterintuitive, but the evidence is very clear. Ivan Illich, ding, thank you. Wonderful work from the 1970s, a Hungarian philosopher based in Los Angeles actually, said, "Beyond a critical speed, no one can save time without forcing another to lose it." Think about that one. "Motorised vehicles create remoteness which they alone can shrink. They create distances for all but then shrink them for only a few." What is he getting at there? Couple of examples. Who's giving time here and who's taking the time? She's giving up her time for this driver. By standing there for two minutes, this driver can go much faster. And if it were the other way around, if the driver stopped there for two minutes, she could go much faster. But the point is, there's only a finite amount of time here and she's giving her time to somebody else and that's what Illich was getting at. And another example would be, what happens when people start travelling much further is that local services close down and move out. And then suddenly people who aren't on this speed bandwagon are stuck with closed services that are now suburban and they no longer can get to. So as Illich says, "They create distances for all but shrink them for only a few." So what we need to be talking about here is not real speed, ding, thank you. Here's our, good lord, look at him. This is our typical American motorist male, I'm sorry, with his Chevy in about 1973. But he's part of the story too. Because what Illich was pointing out was, the typical American male devotes more than 1,600 hours a year to his car but actually travels only 7,500 miles, which is an average of less than five miles an hour. And you're probably sitting there thinking, "How on earth can that be?" Well, Illich is using a rather different metric for time spent on travel than most of us would normally do because most of us would think time on the road is travel time. But Illich says, "No, you have to have a car. And how do you get the car? Unless you steal it, you've got to work. And if you work, you spend time working, so you have to add that time in as well. And you spend time watching advertisements on TV or going to the court to pay fines or doing all the other things associated with motorisation. And they're all part of you building up the possibility to travel much faster. So effective speed counts that into the overall picture and that's what Illich is saying. 7,000, sorry, 1,600 hours per year includes all of that, working to pay for the motorisation which then allows you to drive to various destinations. So it's the time spent earning money to pay the costs of travel which is now included as well in the concept of effective speed. So I'd like to summarise that in what we call the speed paradox, which is that travel time to more distant destinations increases and on-the-road speed do not compensate for the increasing distances, so we spend more time travelling. So you might make it faster on the road, that doesn't mean to say that people spend less time travelling. Secondly, this is not counting the extra time we need to earn the money to pay for all the costs of cars. So if we talk about effective speeds, we're talking about including the time we need to gather resources for travel, which is much higher for cars than shoes or bicycles. And that is logical, isn't it? I mean, how many hours do you have to work to earn the money to pay for a pair of shoes? A few. A week for a bicycle, maybe. Typically, to earn enough money to buy a car, three months or run a car. So anybody in this room who's a car owner, basically you're, and you work as well, basically you're spending a quarter of your year earning the money to own a car before you even move it off the driveway. That's effective speed, you have to count that three months in the overall here. So the speed paradox is that increasing speed, on-the-road speed, doesn't actually save us time at all and indeed slower modes, the ones where you only have to work a couple of hours for some shoes or a bicycle, actually save us time during the course of the year. Okay, so let me just question then the fundamental principle that they were selling to us 100 years ago, that we have adopted hook, line and sinker for the last 100 years, which is that faster is always better. And we don't say that, but we work and speak and act as if we always believe it. Well, what has it done for human health? We sit a lot in cars and we all know that sitting is very bad for us. We don't ride bicycles as much as we should, we don't walk as far as we should. So the damage to human health by the lack of daily physical normal activity is huge as the damage to our health from road trauma and air pollution, the stress and depression that comes from the anxiety of travel by that mode and the way that it weakens social networks. I mean, you can't make friends through car windows, but you can make friends by bumping into people on the footpath outside the local shop or whatever. So there's a huge impact on human health by this idea of travelling faster. And we're told, you know, faster is always better. Well, it ain't better for human health, that's very, very clear. What about for economic health? Costs of roads, parking, crashes, damage to retail, creativity, all of those are costs which we have to factor in of trying to travel faster. And the severance from jobs and economic opportunities is a critical issue. I now live in the USA rather than the UK and I see everywhere major cities that have been cut into strips and ribbons by major freeways. And sadly, they've very often been actually geographically located as a result of racism, deliberately driven through low-income and African-American communities so that those individuals in those communities no longer have access to jobs because they can't cross the roads. And because they're low-income, they don't have vehicles to use those roads, so they're doubly disadvantaged. It's an extreme case, I know, but that's an example of the way in which economic health is damaged by these kinds of constructs. This is the Midtown Expressway in Brooklyn, look at how this severs the... Look at how this severs the neighborhood utterly. Anything on the other side of that road might as well be on Mars as far as those people are concerned. And then lastly, on environmental health, much higher energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions through speed and sprawl. We'll come on to that in a bit in a moment. And that is tailpipe emissions and the embodied emissions. And again, I'll say a little bit more about that in a moment. But I do want to bring this right up to date by talking about two major threats which are in front of us as we speak. And as David pointed out, I fled from here three years ago because of COVID. Just about made it out on the almost last flight. And since then, I'm reading, you know, the United Nations reports and the World Health Organization. And the consensus from those organizations who know a lot more about this than I do is that there are more pandemics coming and they will be much worse than COVID. And we better start preparing for that. That's the consensus. It's not an isolated view. So pandemic protection becomes part of our urban planning. We need to start building that in for the future. And in a pandemic era, fast cities are vulnerable. Because COVID, for example, attacked people who are already, in particular, already suffering poor health. So those who live in environments where they sit a lot, where they don't use walking or cycling to get their daily exercise, where they breathe a lot of poor quality air, those people are vulnerable. And that's a very typical fast city resident that I've just described. So lung damage and so on, physical inactivity, road trauma, fractured communities, isolation of the elderly. All of those are part of the fast city landscape. So those cities, when the next pandemic comes along, are much more likely to be seriously affected than the slow cities where people know their neighbors, where they walk and cycle around, where they get personal health and community health and support from other people that live nearby. So that's the first issue is pandemics. A second specific health, environmental impact in this case is the issue of the climate crisis. And it's very clear that the top image there of people driving long distances involves more tailpipe emissions. They're consuming more energy, which means more emissions. But that's not necessarily the most important issue. The problem is that if we start to build environments like this one, at the end of the journey, there's almost inevitably going to be an environment like this one. And this is a suburb in a Canadian prairie town in Alberta somewhere. I mean, you know, the road is like a runway. You could land a 747 down here. And you may not think that's important, but think about what's happened in New Zealand recently with the rainstorms you've had. There's no sponge capacity here. I mean, that is a disaster waiting to happen when there's a serious rain event here. But more than that is the embodied emissions which are built into this landscape. Asphalt takes an enormous amount of digging up of stuff and high-temperature molding of materials to make the asphalt that gets poured on the road. That's embodied emissions. And concrete is unbelievably damaging because the cement has to be calcined to this extraordinarily high temperature. And if concrete were actually a country, concrete would be the third largest emitter in the world after China and the US. It is tremendously damaging. So that's why I want to emphasize tailpipe and embodied, because the embodied are 50% of the total emissions of a car-dominated landscape. You can't escape those. You can have all the electric cars you like. They're not going to do anything about concrete and asphalt, which are part of the landscape that they require. Okay, so how do we slow the city? I'm not going to say much about this. Been touring around the city today with Dave and his colleagues. And they're making a good fist of starting. And they're well on their way. And this session is not about trying to discuss detail of how we do that. I'm much more interested in the big picture of how we can actually place ourselves in this coming battle to create the right kind of societal response to what we've had for 100 years, because it clearly can't continue. So there are lots of ways we can slow the city. It's about slowing the streets. Default 30 kilometers an hour would be a minimum. And then slow spaces like school streets, play streets, reallocating road capacity, creating networks for walking and cycling and so on. So lots of things that can be done out there, but I don't want to get into that detail. So I'm going to move on to looking at four or five major barriers to slowing, the big picture issues. Number one is what we're calling big speed. And this is defined by a colleague of mine, Matt Burke, from Griffith University in Brisbane. "The coalition of bureaucrats, politicians, engineers, transport modelers and planners, motored them, boy racers and movie makers that promote the high-speed highways and byways of our dreams." That's a beautiful definition. And big speed, you know, it's like Big Ag, Big Pharma, Big Tobacco, Big Oil, Big whatever. It's the same principle, a coalition of powerful interests who are out to shape the world to the benefit of them and their shareholders and creating landscapes where we'll be subservient and go along with that and believe things like faster is better. And as long as we believe that, we're supporting the concept of big speed out there dominating our lives. It's not just them. We're along with this as well. Our gullibility leads to our complicity. It's about the elite projection. Many of our transport planners, for example, are male. Every country in the world, women walk more than men, but their environments are planned by men. So that is this idea of assuming that everybody behaves like me. So I'll build an environment for me. But that's not true. It's not going to lead to the environments that most people need. And then lastly is this issue of the normalization of speed. And this can be pretty boring. I'll try and go through this very quickly. I had a conversation with a female transport planner in Australia last month. And she said to me, it's not so much the why we need to plan and provide more space and priority for people walking, but the how to get it through the decision-making frameworks. And she went on to say, "The accepted standard transport decision-making tools, like travel time, transport business cases, make it hard to approve walking priority projects as the tools all consider that delays to people driving are more important." And the travel time is not always a good measure for people walking because people will often take more time if you make the environment nicer. And she finished by saying, "These tools are entrenched in the system." And that's not an accident. And they've been there for 100 years. And it's very, very difficult to change things as long as all the rules we have have been written and put in a rulebook by big speed, which is basically what has happened. The consequences of that? Well, a couple of images for you. You'll know what these are like. I could, you know, we could have lots of discussion here about what the consequences are, but here's just one. Big speed obliterates alternatives. Most of these people in this picture here don't want to be driving their kids to school. Why would they do that? Why do Australian parents spend about 25% of their time every week driving kids around? It's not what everybody wants to do. It's what people feel they need to do to protect their kids from other parents driving their kids around. There's fewer eyes on the street because nobody else is walking. And that makes it more dangerous for our kids or whoever to be walking. There's more chauffeuring of vulnerable users, more forced car ownership for the poor. And there's also a set of issues relating to governance. You know, this kind of big-ticket fetishism, you know, toys for the boys, the reflected glow you get from standing and cutting a ribbon in front of shiny new motorways. That is a particularly male thing, it always seems to me. But there's certainly an element of that in there. But, you know, the basic whole system is biased in that way. I mean, who, for example, knows of any serious data collection on walking? Hardly any. Everybody in this room walks. Are you being counted? No. And what isn't counted doesn't count. You don't count. If you drive a car, everybody knows where you turn left, how fast you go, how far you go, where you park, where you came from, because we collect that data. But we don't collect data on walking. So it falls off the end of the discussion. Second issue that we need to overcome: leadership. Can't do this on our own. We have to have somebody out there to assist us. Okay, here's an example of what leadership could or could not look like. And this is a real example, but it's a very old one which I got from a former student. It's actually a city in Oregon. And it dates from 1980. So the figures are ridiculous now. I mean, you couldn't build very much for 157 million. But you could spend 157 million as your transport budget for this town in two ways. The fast scenario, build eight kilometers of Belt Lane highway, build four miles of parkway and double the capacity of a corridor and bridge into your CBD. That's 157 million worth. Looks as though it might be quite good value until you look at what else you could do with 157 million. For a start, give every resident aged 11 or over a free bicycle with all equipment and clothing. It's the first thing you could do. And then you could pay for 30,000 bicycle racks, 30 miles of non-motorized paths, 10,000 bike trailers, a tenfold rise in the rideshare program, and eliminate bus fares for seven years. And you've still got money left over. Now you can use that to write off the city budget shortfall for the next seven years, give $100 a month to 1,000 homeless people, and build a library. It's pretty obvious which one we would choose in terms of the benefit to our city. But of course, they're rarely put up as binary choices like that. So leadership will take us towards the outcome that we want. And as Lloyd Wright said about these kinds of figures, walkability is not a financial issue. It's not a technical issue, but it is a political issue. It's about choices. And I'll give you another example because I think this is the one that really does strike home. I'm a Brit and I like to talk about, you know, European cities that have done good things, but I try very hard not to because the reaction is, that's Europe, doesn't work here, everything's different. We're not Europe. We're not Amsterdam, is the phrase you very often hear. And what people are thinking of when they say that is that's Amsterdam. We can't do that. Don't be silly, we're Palmerston North. We haven't got that kind of opportunity which Amsterdam is. Well, if you ask the question, what did Amsterdam look like 30 years ago? Then that's the picture of the same street. Amsterdam wasn't always Amsterdam, is the point that comes out of that. Somebody made a decision to go in that direction. And as Brent Tedarian said, Amsterdam chose to give their streets to cars. And then they chose to take them back. There's nothing magical about Amsterdam. They just chose. Here's some leadership in action. And this is perhaps more relevant to you. This is Pontevedra in northwestern Spain. 85,000 people. What's Palmerston North? Around that? A bit more? 100,000? A little bit more? Okay. But a smallish town where Mayor Lopez, a former medical doctor, family practitioner, was elected mayor in 1999 in a city which had serious problems with car traffic and pollution and other related matters. And he said, I'm going to deal with this just as I deal with my patients. I'm not going to give him a pill because that deals with the consequences. I'm going to deal with the root causes of what's causing my patients, i.e. the whole city, to be so ill with air pollution and road trauma and so on. So he instituted a whole series of policies. Car access to the city center was restricted, speeds limited to 30K max, parking restricted in the city center, and all roads became shared spaces, which doubled the walking capacity across the city overnight. Consequences? If you look at what's there now, well, 70% of kids in Pontevedra now walk and bike to school. 80% of kids walk to school, sorry. 70% of all trips are walk and bike. 80% of kids walk to school. Road deaths, not a single fatality in the town of nearly 100,000 people in 14 years. I don't know what the figures are here, but they're nothing like that. Traffic deaths were 30 in 10 years in Pontevedra. And now, as you can see, they are zero. What else has changed? It's been economically successful. I went there 18 months ago and it's gorgeous. It's a lovely place to be. And as somebody said when they visited there, the noise of traffic has disappeared. And what you get instead is the tweeting of birds and the camellias, the tinkling of coffee spoons and the sound of human voices. And isn't that what we want out of our city center? And look at that reduction in greenhouse gas emissions as well. 67% in 10 years. And if you think that's good, I don't know if there's any politicians in the room, but you might want to consider this last point. Lores is now in his sixth, four-year term as mayor. He's been mayor for 23 years. And there wasn't, you know, an idea of getting rid of him. Everybody just said, this is fantastic. And they keep voting him back in again. And that, to me, is wonderfully energizing to know that these kind of changes meet with so much public approval. So that's about leadership. What about, thirdly, bringing it down to our level? Communities, the community that you live in. What can you do? When New Zealand is making a start on this, your reshaping streets, the regulatory changes consultation document was out at the back end of '22 and talked about giving more space, more priority to walking and cycling modes through street demonstrations, restricting traffic, school streets and community streets. So you've got a template there now to build ideas around what you can achieve. Well, you might want to just take, almost take that into your own hands. Work with your local government, of course. But this is an example of an overnight transformation outside a school in Mumbai where the kids did this. They were concerned about the danger outside the school. So one of the teachers just said, okay, come along with pots of paint in the morning and let's see what we can do about it. And they just repainted the road. And the city was so impressed, it's now become a permanent feature there. So in other words, a demonstration project done by the community met with so much acclaim by the city that it became permanent. And many communities around the world are doing exactly that kind of thing. Taking, either working with the city or if they feel bold enough, maybe making some changes themselves. Get the kids out there, start painting the road, putting chalk out, balloons, whatever it might be, to say to people, our streets are different. We want something to change in our area. And lastly, you as individuals, what can you do to get some sort of change? It's difficult. I know it's difficult. Social traps. I can only change behavior if everyone else does. I mean, that's a classic one. And in the cartoon here, there's too much traffic for Billy to walk to school. Did everybody forget that Billy was on the list of fellow travelers? So we drive him. And that's a very common response. So social traps are a problem. Here's the elephant. Here's the elephant. Thank you very much. I'm not accusing you, but you might want to think, maybe your next-door neighbour or somebody that you know, which bits of the elephant is that person using to not make any kind of decision or take a position on where we ought to be changing our behaviour in the face of these dire threats? We want slower speeds. We want more walking and cycling. But we don't want to personally give up all the privileges that will allow things to happen, like wide roads, high speeds, and lots of free parking. You know, you see people ducking and weaving at this point. Hardin's Tragedy of the Commons, you know, a very famous parable. "Freedom in a commons brings ruin to all." And if you don't know Hardin's work on the commons, I do recommend you go and have a look. So what does that mean for you? I recommend you to have a look at Lloyd Alter's book that came out last year, Living the 1.5-degree Lifestyle. And he says, "Get out of your car. It's the most important, the single largest factor in most people's footprints." Note, I didn't say, "Get rid of your car", I just said, "Use it less." And that means, in your life, in order of impact, walk, bike, or e-bike. And somewhere in there, we need to fit in micro-mobilities as well. But the car is right off the end of that series of choices. And the social change is needed for this because we can't do it on our own. I mean, giving up smoking, that sort of thing. Some of you might remember how difficult that was. I mean, it's willpower, personal willpower, but you can't do it unless people around you are supporting you and this environment supports you to do it. And that did happen in the end with defeating Big Tobacco. So we need these to be societal changes. And that means also we need scientific knowledge as well as political action and societal change in the face of well-funded opposition. And interestingly, as Alter says, actually, many of the same people that we're still up against in terms of big speed. Well, what you can do as an individual is push harder for more things to happen in your particular neighbourhood. And I'll just put up one slide for this because I'm running out of time and I want to move on. This, to me, is really significant stuff for communities around New Zealand because you're struggling with this issue as we speak. The green bars represent the percentage of children walking or cycling to school. There are five countries here, Japan. Nearly 100% of kids walk or cycle to school. Netherlands over 90. These others, all over 50. And there's these outliers down here. Australia and New Zealand, sorry, Australia and the US. And New Zealand's in there somewhere. Don't know exactly what the number is. And there are many differences between these countries, but one thing that really stands out is that these five all have 30-kilometer-an-hour speed limits around their schools. And these two have 40 or 50-kilometer-an-hour speed limits around their schools in the belief that somehow that will protect children, which is, of course, total nonsense. So what you can do as an individual, if you can't find a way to change your own particular way of living, you can push with your neighbours, your community groups, your friends, your clubs or whatever, to say, "We need to change our neighbourhood. We need to be talking to Dave at council and others to make sure that we get 30K into our neighbourhood." And that will change things quite dramatically for the way people live and use their streets outside your door. Okay, let's finalise by moving on to where I hope this will take us. It's a complicated diagram. I appreciate that. Just stay with me for a very short period. The goal is 1.5 degrees Celsius. We can't accept anything worse than that. We've got to get to 1.5. If you work out the budget over the years 2020 to 2050, to get to 1.5, that means we can emit at maximum 65 gigatons of carbon dioxide. 65. Bear that one in mind. And what we've got here are four ways of getting towards that figure. And I'm going to go through these in sequence, one, two, three, and four, and see where we go. First one: business as usual. That's this one. This is where we are. This is, "We keep building cities for cars instead of people. Car use increases. Most cars and vehicles are powered by fossil fuels." End result: 119 gigatons, nearly twice what we need to get to 1.5 degrees. That is a catastrophic failure. Second one: compact cities. Well, if we all lived a little bit closer together, then carbon would go down, congestion costs would go down, pollution sprawl would all go down. But, and this is mixed-use cities focused on public transit, bicycling, and especially walking, but most motor vehicles still powered by fossil fuels. End result: much better, 86 gigatons. But remember, we were aiming for 65. So that won't get us to 1.5 either. And you're going to have more cyclone Gabriel's. Third one, a favourite topic for many people. If we electrify, it'll all be fine. It'll help, for sure. Here's the electrified city. All new motor vehicles are electric by 2040 worldwide, but cities are still built for cars rather than people. End result would be 75 gigatons. Getting closer, but still not there. And do remember, electric vehicles still run over people and kill them. They still need car parking space. They still have congestion. They are only a solution to one thing. And as many people say, "Electric vehicles are a solution for the car industry, not a solution for humanity." But then lastly, the fourth one is when you start to put those together. The compact city which is electrified. We build more dense, mixed-use cities focused on public transit, bicycling, and especially walking. All new motor vehicles are electric by 2040. And the end result of doing that would be getting to 60 gigatons at the end of the 2050 period. So that's four scenarios for you, all of them beguiling in their way, but actually not all very successful in meeting the needs of us surviving as a species on the planet. The only way to 1.5 degrees is what the Washington authors of this study say. And what that actually means, and I'm pulling this right together now, is what we need to be thinking about is environments which are speed-resistant, pandemic-resistant, and climate-change-resistant. This kind of thing, a 15-minute city or the 20-minute city, the idea here is that we create relatively compact, self-contained units within cities, grouped around shopping centres or neighbourhood centres or villages within the town, which would have local services such as education and green space and jobs and shopping and so forth, and would be relatively self-sufficient if they needed to be. So travel here would be slow, inevitably. The idea is that everything for your life would be available within a 15-minute journey by foot or bike within your 15-minute city. So it's a slow city. Secondly, if you did that, it would also be a pandemic-resistant city. Because what could happen here is that you could relatively easily isolate one particular neighbourhood from other neighbourhoods in the city so that whatever virus was present wouldn't spread to other neighbourhoods. But in the meantime, people in that neighbourhood could still live a relatively normal life. So it's a very good anti-pandemic strategy as well as being a slow strategy. And then finally, of course, because it's slow and low energy and zero sprawl and low emission lifestyles, it's also an anti-climate crisis strategy as well. So he's got the whole package: speed-resistant, pandemic-resistant, and climate-change-resistant as well. So to summarise, what I'm arguing here is that motordom sold us a myth, that faster is better. And my contention is that faster is worse for all kinds of health. It's worse for pandemic resistance, and it's worse for the climate emergency too. So what we've got here is, ding, thank you. Around the world now, we're seeing a huge resurgence of walkability in cities of all shapes and sizes and countries and so forth. And the pushback against cars is certainly well underway. And this is my friend, Peatonito, the masked defender of pedestrian rights in Mexico City who turns out to push cars off sidewalks and crosswalks and where they're interfering with the rights of people to walk around uninterrupted in the city. And when you do these kinds of things, do bear in mind what it's going to bring to you. You can't say to people, "This is a great idea, but unfortunately, it's going to make your life worse." Nobody's going to accept that. That's a ridiculous thing to do. But I hope you'll agree with me, from what I've been saying, that actually, all these changes will make life better. The local economy will be better off because of more prosperity and supporting local businesses. There'll be urban regeneration. There'll be greater city attractiveness, promoting tourism, a better branding and identity, attracting the creative individuals to come and live and work in Palmerston North. There'll be cost savings for the local government in terms of congestion costs and construction and maintenance costs. And for you, there'll be these critical benefits for your own pocketbook. Number one: reduced healthcare, because you'll be healthier. So you'll have to pay much less for your health insurance. Secondly, your transport costs will be much lower because you'll be living car-free or car-light, which will be easy in a walkable neighbourhood, a 15-minute neighbourhood. But the third one, people often forget this one, the long-term equity gains in the slow neighbourhood. If you buy a car and live in a drivable neighbourhood, your car goes down in value like a stone, and you have to replace it after a little while. You have to replace it because you're living in a drivable neighbourhood. So you're getting worse off, not better. If you live in a walkable neighbourhood and buy a house, your house will inflate in value. And as long as you stay in that walkable neighbourhood, you're going to get richer.